Okay, at this time, I'd like to call the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities' Regular Session Meeting of November 6, 2024 to order. We would like to welcome all listening or viewing this meeting of the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Public Utilities, whether in person or through technology. This meeting is being recorded both video and audio. During the Visitor's Comments section of the agenda, community members who wish to speak to the Board will be asked to provide their name and address and will then have three minutes to speak. Members of the public using Zoom that wish to address the Board need to use the Raise Hand feature at the bottom of the application or window to signal that they wish to address the Board during the Visitor's Comments section. In addition, there will be a public comments section after the General Manager staff reports. During this section, the public may comment on this evening's presentations. Members of the public connected by phone need to press *9 to indicate they wish to address the Board in the Visitor's Comments section. Those attending in person should sign up on a sign up sheet located near the entry. Comments are limited to three minutes and should be directed to the Board. As these comments are public, the Board cautions visitors to not disclose confidential account information or information on an account that is not in their name. Staff will not provide individual account information or history in an open meeting. As always, the public may also email or call the BPU with any concerns. The agenda and presentations may be found on the BPU website, or if you're using Zoom, they will appear on your screen. As a reminder, this is a business meeting of the Board of Directors, and we will conduct the meeting accordingly. The following rules apply to this meeting. Every person in this room will act respectfully towards each other. Personal attacks and accusations towards any person will not be tolerated. State your specific issue to the Board, and we will determine staff's involvement. Attendees shall refrain from side discussion or individual commentary that interferes with speakers and other attendees at this meeting. If side discussion is necessary, please take it outside the boardroom. If any of the rules above are breached during the meeting, that individual is subject to removal from the boardroom. My name is Tom Groneman, Second District and Board President. Other members of our Board and staff include William Johnson, General Manager; David Haley, Member-at-Large, Position Two, and Board Vice President; Stevie Wake, Senior, First District and Board Secretary; Brett Parker, Third District; Mary Gonzalez, Member-at-Large, Position One; Rose Mulvaney Henry, Member-at-Large, Position Number Three; and Angela Lawson, Chief Acting Counsel. Please remember to put your phones on silent, and please also be aware that the microphones are very sensitive and can pick up and record comments from anywhere in the room. Before we begin our meeting, please rise and join me in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Here.
Haley.
Present.
Wakes.
Here.
Mulvaney Henry.
Here.
Parker.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
You have a quorum.
Okay. Before I ask for approval of the minutes of the work session of October 16, 2024, are there any additions or corrections?
Move approval of the work session minutes.
Wait a second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay. Before I ask for approval of the minutes of the regular session of October 16, 2024, are there any corrections or additions?
I move approval of the regular session minutes.
Wait a second. Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
This time, we turn the meeting over to Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chris, is there anyone signed up to speak tonight? Rob, is there anyone online wanting to speak tonight?
I'm not sure. I'm not sure we did both sets of minutes.
Hold on, Rob.
We did both of work.
Can we do agenda in one set of minutes?
We did both sets of minutes. I'm not sure about the agenda because.
I know we did the agenda.
You did both.
I did both sets of minutes.
You did both.
For both.
He did.
We did. I know we did both sets of minutes. Maybe I didn't. Maybe I missed the agenda.
We need agenda. Okay, thank you. I read it in the wrong spot.
Journey.
I moved to approve the agenda.
Second.
All right, it's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Thank you. Roll call, Groneman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Okay, so now we're to the visitor section.
Rob. Is she available?
She's available, and she's unmuted.
All right. If you can state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes.
Louise Lynch, Kansas City, Kansas. So you could probably put this comment on the record because it probably won't happen for centuries. I want to thank this Board, particularly Mr. Johnson, Mr. Groneman, Stevie Wakes, Brett Parker, Ms. Gonzalez, and Rose Henry, Mulvaney Henry, for the outstanding job you did under the circumstances at the special UG meeting. I know that that was a difficult session, as it was for those of us in the audience to hear you all be attacked in the manner that you were. To keep your composure, to keep fighting for the residents, to keep trying to be a part of the resolutions was extremely, extremely appreciative, at least on this resident's mind, and supporting each other and your peers. Thank you very much. We will continue to support as long as we see that you all are supporting us as well and everyone is transparent as it has been. This is the best Board that I have seen in my dealings with BPU. It is not the norm for me to be on this side of the line. I never thought I would be on this side of the line to support you and not, you know, be extremely angry, although we won't go into all those other issues because they still exist, but we're going to just celebrate this moment, and I truly, truly thank you. To Angela Lawson, I know we don't get along, and I know that we are on opposite sides probably 98% of the time, but I believe the way you were treated in that meeting was disgusting. I don't believe that your HR issues with our mayor should have been brought out in a countywide meeting that was supposed to be put out for solutions. And my hope for you is that you think about that when you are dealing with the rest of us, but I hope that you will be challenging them with a lawsuit for putting your private information out there as far as an HR issue. Please, this Board, keep on advocating for your residents. Keep on trying to give us the least possible amount of money to pay to take the pilot off, not just in geographic location, splitting the bill and letting the UG take their part of those fees, and not giving in to the rhetoric of the residents that supposedly we're supposed to represent all of us, and they do not, that opposed you at that meeting, and don't hold that against the rest of us because most of us don't feel that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, is there anyone else?
Yes, sir. Dr. Alma Hall also has her hand raised, and she is.
Dr. Hall, if you could state your name and address for the record, and you have three minutes to address the Board.
She is unmuted, but I'm not getting the audio signal.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Yes. Okay. My apologies. Again, my name is Dr. Alma Hall. I live in Kansas City, Kansas. First things first, I want to say thank you for giving me the time to speak. As I stated before, I continue to have several concerns. Not going to touch anything about the meeting at the UG, although I do have constantly had many questions publicly and emails, and I have yet to hear any responses. Again, my goal is to establish a collaborative approach to ensure that our community actually has a livable community. So hopefully, the conversation can start about how to save revenues and taxes within our community, especially right now with our high taxes and the bond that just passed. So I do would like, I would like to hear some solutions as far as how BPU is going to collaborate and move towards the working with your parent company, Unified Government. The goal is that we begin some conversations as far as consolidation, self-consolidation, and start looking at how to save tax revenue and taxes for our community. The goal is that we attract people to move into our county instead of leaving. So I would like to hopefully see a public notice with some of your responses. And again, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Rob, is there anyone else? Okay. All right, we'll move into the next section. The Board's okay with that. We did put RMI back on the agenda to complete their presentation from the last Board meeting. We had some technical issues that came up, so to be fair, we'll let them conclude their presentation if they're, Rob, if they're ready to go.
Give me the second timer. I need to update the screen.
Hi, all, and thanks, Board, for taking the time to listen to this presentation. Apologies for the glitch before, and I'm really grateful to be in front of you again, and I will try to keep it succinct so that there's not too much repetition. But I will move through the slide deck. It's slightly truncated as it was before, but yeah, and you can go ahead and advance to the next slide. Thank you. So again, we partner with Sarah Club and Kandens for an affordable future to review the BPU's 2024 Integrated Resources Plan that was done by Black and Beach. A global background about me, I've been a consultant and expert witness on resource planning issues since 2018, and I've given expert testimony in Virginia, North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Nova Scotia, and Missouri, I believe. So I've reviewed, I would say, dozens of integrated resource plans and led the review on this one for RMI, the Rocky Mountain Institute, which is a nonprofit based in Colorado that works to secure affordable, reliable, and clean energy for all. So with all that, we did review the Black and Beach IRP, which was submitted to the Board, and I know you all are voting on today, and I have a couple thoughts I wanted to share, and again, I really appreciate you listening to this presentation quite quickly. So just like before, we didn't do an exhaustive analysis, but we did look at kind of these three topics: overall best practices, demand-side resources, and evaluating BPU's existing fleet. Was able to cover the top two in our previous presentation, so I'll go quite quickly through those and then spend a little more time on the third, and then I'll wrap up with some specific conclusions and recommendations. Go ahead and advance through. So in best practices, we talked about these kind of three qualities that we think about IRPs through, which is trusted, comprehensive, and aligned. And to give you a really quick rundown, trusted means the folks, the stakeholders who this IRP is going to affect understand what's happening in the IRP, and they can check the data themselves, and everyone understands what the inputs are, how their inputs were used, and what the outputs are. That includes, I think, a solid stakeholder process, which I know the Board has engaged in, and I think that's great, and there's always ways to improve those, and there are some recommendations I make in the memo. In terms of comprehensiveness, IRPs work best when they evaluate a wide variety of options and technologies. And in 2024, the number of options continues to increase, and we're increasingly integrating across transmission and distribution systems as well, so it's an exciting time. And then aligned just means, are we clear on what our goals are for this IRP? And do we understand the kind of context and the goals of all the jurisdictions that are affecting this IRP? So that includes kind of like city priorities, state priorities, federal policies, that kind of thing. Because ultimately, if you're setting a plan for 20 years and you don't understand what your objectives are at the end, you might not get a plan that's aligned with those objectives. All right. And then on demand-side resources, this again will be quite high level, and we did write a memo that goes into more detail, but demand-side resources are basically those that are kind of on the customer side of the meter or closer to customers. You can think of a smart thermostat or a smart water heater or a demand response program or rooftop solar, that kind of thing. They provide many different value streams to the system that can result in savings not just for the person who has the resource, but also the system as a whole. And I've identified a couple here from energy and capacity to kind of distribution, infrastructure, and resilience. So it's important that when we evaluate, this gets back to the comprehensive thing, it's important to evaluate what the demand-side resources can do. So I've got several on the next slide, really specific recommendations that the Board could consider if they wanted to dive more into this. And again, I think it is an extremely helpful set of resources that's not usually considered in resource plans, although that is changing. So you can advance to the next slide, Rob. And again, these are quite shortened, but in the short term, we can upload, update the way we do our load and energy efficiency forecasts. We can think about expanding EDSM programs. In the memo that we wrote to the Board, we describe a couple kind of case studies that the Board could consider. And then there's some federal financing programs that may not be available still, but it's something for the Board to consider. And then in the future, I think considering expanding the set of utility EDSM programs that are available and kind of taking those case studies and seeing what innovative solutions BPU could provide, understanding that BPU already does have a suite of energy efficiency and demand-side management programs. And then thinking about these virtual power plants, which are kind of an emerging topic. They may not be, I think we're still in a place where we're setting the groundwork for BPU's to be easily deployable, but I think when distributed energy resources or DARs are adopted and we have good communication, we're able to deploy those more easily. All right, so you can go ahead to the next slide, Rob. And I apologize for talking quickly, but I don't want to, I don't want to repeat my same mistakes, or I don't want to get cut off. So here we are. And please feel free to interrupt me if you'd like to ask a question on any of this. So this is the last topic, evaluating BPU's fleet, and we focused our review on near Min Creek, near Min Creek's Unit 1, because it's obviously a significant map of the energy and costs of the BPU portfolio. And we actually focus on two major topics here, but the IRP has an opportunity to evaluate options for the Creek unit, including economic retirement, and then the second is integrating air pollution costs into BPU's resource planning. So I'll talk about the first one first. Which, and you can advance the slide. Yep. So in general, when we're thinking about economic retirement analysis, there's essentially three options. Maybe the fourth one would be run the system until, or run the unit until its scheduled retire date or its end of expected life. But in general, there's kind of three options that one might consider. One is just economic retirement and replacement capacity. And this is, we've seen coal fleets across the country kind of retire because of economic pressures, and the reason that they retire is because for the systems that use them, it's more expensive to keep running that unit and keep it online than it is to procure capacity and energy elsewhere. And we can use tools like integrated resource plans to do a pretty holistic analysis of what that looks like. The second is cleaner powering, which is a more cutting-edge solution, but the idea here is there already is a point of interconnection at the near Min Creek unit, and points of interconnection are quite valuable these days, no matter which grid you're on. And this is an opportunity to interconnect either stored or solar potentially to that point of interconnection and use that as a way to deploy cost-effective renewables quickly. And then the third is seasonal operation, which is just running near Min Creek during the peak season only, and the benefit of this is less fixed operations and maintenance costs because you don't have the system or the unit ready all the time, and it's a way to sort of mitigate those costs of keeping it online. So I just want to underscore this. Integrated resource plans, because they include this detailed economic model of BPU system, they're a really critical opportunity to evaluate these options for near Min Creek 1, and it's a place where you can do kind of rigorous, subjective, quantitative analysis that determines the best path for BP ratepayers. And in the context of what we saw in our review, it wasn't clear there was sort of like a comprehensive review of near Min Creek's retirement. So that's just a place where I'd really urge the Board to consider a supplemental scenario or something like that to test that hypothesis. Next slide. So a case study just from Ameren, Missouri, next state over. So they are in a different situation because they're investor-owned utility, and they get a much more benefit from using the federal debt from the Energy Infrastructure Reinvestment Program. But they did kind of finance retirement of a coal unit and deploy a significant amount of clean energy. And the graph on the right, I know I'm moving quite quickly, but I think it's just the order of magnitude savings we're looking at here, which is, and over the lifetimes of these assets, we're looking at kind of tens of millions or hundreds of millions of savings, and this is for a single unit or a single generator. So it's pretty significant. I think it really merits consideration here, both kind of like early retirement, replacement with clean, and also the Energy Infrastructure Reinvestment Program. All right, next slide. Then the second thing we evaluated was local air pollution impacts, which are really difficult to evaluate, and for that reason, not often included in integrated resource plans, but if we're considering all the costs that a community bears, I think it's reasonable to consider including air pollution health costs as well. We used an EPA tool called Cobra to do this analysis, and we basically, we found that essentially what we're looking at is, and this is not, this is not, this is not net present value, but something like $347 million in health costs to a local community through, and this is not including climate or carbon, this is just particulate matter. And this is basically like a quarter of the total costs of one of the BPU IRP scenarios. So if we were integrating these costs, that these health costs that the community bears, it would be a quarter of the total cost of the IRP scenario. So it's worth considering, including a consideration for this, and it's another reason to consider a really comprehensive look at retirement. All right, you can go ahead and slip us through the next one. Yeah, so federal policy uncertainty. Trump won the 2024 presidential election, so there's uncertainty about how existing policy and regulation are going to be implemented and what future existing policy and regulation look like. I'll just note, these changes in policy are not likely to change the fundamental coal economics, and it's likely that we'll get at least some clarity in the next, in the coming months on what's going to happen here. So this may be a point where BPU could consider an updated IRP that considers a wider set of options in the near future. So just a thought there. And then these are my last two slides. What's the bottom line? What can BPU do? So in this memo, we give you all playbook for options that the Board could use to ensure its IRP works for ratepayers. And this is a longer list, but includes setting ground rules for transparent and generative stakeholder consultation, using, integrating the IRP with an all-source procurement process, taking inspiration from other energy efficiency programs, and that should, I guess, it should say peer municipal utilities there, and evaluating the best economic option for near Min 1, as well as flexus's economic optimization. And then some really short-term things that BPU could do today. They could direct Black and Beach, given that this model's already set up and that those costs are to a degree already sunk or that the marginal cost of more runs is quite low, you could consider supplemental scenarios that evaluate policy uncertainty, definitely examine options at near Min Creek 1, and integrate those local air pollution costs. And you could also evaluate options that are available to deploy clean resources at that point of interconnection and develop a working group or contract with a consultant to explore innovative EE and DSM programs. So with that, next slide. I'll just say, we did prepare a memo that covers these topics in greater detail and can share with the Board, although I understand you're voting on the IRP today. And we're happy to participate in follow-up conversations if that's of interest with you all, and we can potentially provide additional technical assistance if that's of interest. So I will leave it there. Thanks again so much for your time, and feel free to reach out to me, and I'm happy to answer any questions now if there are any.
I have one. Going back to the example you gave of the community in Missouri and the savings, Ameren, yeah.
Yep.
So just at first glance, that savings on that chart are impressive. I just wondered if you could unpack that a little bit and how the use of the EIR helped them achieve that.
Yeah, so EIR is essentially like, it's essentially available debt from the federal government through the DOE's Loan Programs Office. So that debt's available at a rate that's basically at the federal government's risk or like quite risk-free rate, which is, you know, something like 3% with some adder and a couple other additional details. But essentially, what Ameren did was a combination of something that's called securitizing that coal asset, which essentially takes it from an asset and turns it into a security by selling it to someone else who shuts it down and then receiving kind of benefits from that over time. And then this clean EIR is basically like, the counterfactual here is if you were going to deploy these clean resources with kind of like traditional IOU or investor-owned utility equity in debt versus if you were going to use this kind of like federal debt, a much less cost number. So I don't have the numbers off the top of my head, but I know Russia Island is quite large. I think it's in the hundreds of megawatts in terms of its size, so that's just a lot of money, and what you're seeing here is kind of like, it's net present value dollars over time, so this may be over 15, 20, or 25 years, these numbers, but they are obviously discounted. So I can definitely, what I love to do is follow up with a link that would explain this in more detail, but I appreciate the question.
No, that's great. Just to summarize then, the savings is the relative savings in the borrowing to fund the new cleaner energy infrastructure, right? So getting to borrow at that much lower rate makes this much more feasible.
Yeah, exactly.
Yes, and a follow-up with the link would be great, too. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Absolutely.
And I appreciate the review. This wouldn't affect where I am with the plan or not, but I am curious about, I think you referenced, call it the Cobra or the mortality rate, especially for the continuation at near Min, and how that study was brought about. I would reach out to you later, would really be interested in knowing, you know, in terms of comparisons, we're looking at the data from other existing plants in other areas, what that rate would be and the impact on the community regarding the health weight or the health from the air pollution and the rates that are there. So I appreciate that information. That's intriguing and disconcerting at the same time.
Yeah, agreed, and happy to follow up with that, with any assistance on that. Absolutely happy to do that.
Yeah, I think I concur with Senator Haley regarding the health risks, particularly as we know where we stand regarding our health location as far as the statewide, that we're one of the most unhealthy counties in the whole state, and if this has any contribution to that, that is a concern of mine as well.
Yeah, absolutely. And that's the tricky part about this type of regulation is trying to figure out which costs are within the scope of consideration, which aren't, but I think having additional, kind of additional information is just helpful for decision-making in general. So glad to hear if it's at least of interest initially and happy to follow up in ways that can be helpful.
Let me just ask again, this Haley, again, is that empirical data that looks at other areas as well? I know that this is focused primarily on near Min, but of course, we have some other, there are others in the region, other coal plants in the region, but I'd like to, and I won't belabor the discussion right now, but I just, it just kind of was eye-opening, and I'd like very much to hear more about that because, as was mentioned, we here in Wyandotte County have some ongoing environmental concerns already pre-existing, and if this is exacerbating it. have some ongoing environmental concerns already preexisting, if this is exacerbating it or prolonging it, I certainly am curious to know where else you've seen or what other evaluations may have been had at similarly situated plants and the effect on their communities as well.
Yeah, absolutely. So Cobra is a, like I said, it's EPA tool and it's notoriously quite difficult to model the flow of air or pollutant through air. And so I think you can think of a lot of this as sort of like a statistical average based on regional emissions rates. So we expect coal units in this region have a typical, might have a typical damages of X or Y. And we know that Newman Creek generated this many megawatt hours in this year. So if we use this kind of like statistical average for how much costs or even additional fatalities that might create, we get this number. So there's an element of sort of averaging that allows us to get what I would might think of as like a directional or an order of magnitude estimate instead of something that's that's sort of empirical. But again, this, and the Cobra tool is, is basically, it's quite easy to get one of these directional estimates for more or less any plant in the United States. So if there is a comparison that'd be helpful, I mean, that's definitely something that's possible. And the other thing just to note is especially particulate matter is its damages are really local to the plant. And the density, obviously, the density of like the per capita people in the area around a plant are are a huge variable in how much damages there are, which is why plants in more urban areas can be, can cause more damages than ones that are in more rural areas. And that's its own kind of environmental justice issue. But but it's just something to note is that the ones that are closer to people do or tend to affect more people. But yeah, happy to follow up with more details there.
And thank you for your intelligence, Mr. President. Thank you for the presentation. It's more of a generalization based on urban impact and but there could be other factors as well. And I look forward to continuing on the discussion with that. It's a great point that you brought up and I look forward to further visit.
Yeah, thanks.
Yes, Rose.
Thank you. Mr. Fish, thank you for the presentation and thank you for coming back again tonight to finish that out for us. Appreciate that. My question is actually not for you, but I know that we've got our friends from Black and Beach here with us tonight. Am I out of order if I ask them a few questions about the RMI presentation? Come on up, gentlemen. Thank you both very much for coming tonight. Appreciate it. So along the lines of the discussion that we were just having here, I guess I would like your reaction to your comments on, I guess, two items that Mr. Fitch covered tonight. One, sort of the comprehensive review, you know, of the retirement of near man and whether or not you could comment on whether or not you guys thought that that was adequately covered in the IRP that that we're looking at now? And or if there was some distinction you could make between what RMI's presentation was on that?
Well, I can say that within the analysis that we performed, the modeling that we did, it was allowed for the model to retire near man creek one during the different scenarios based on economic decisions. There was not a enforced retirement unless the scenario demanded it due to environmental regulations. But, you know, prior to that, the model could choose if it made economic sense to retire near man creek one.
Okay, so look, basically looking at all the options with regards to retiring it in any particular year compared to whether it would be lower cost to continue to operate near man one versus retiring it. If you retire it, then you need to replace that capacity. So there's a large cost associated with replacing that capacity. So I looked at the economics of continued operation versus retiring that that unit.
Right. Now, I appreciate that. And then the second question I have is sort of in regard to the air pollution health impacts that we were discussing. And I guess, I presume because RMI has told us that this was not factored into the IRP. I guess, can you guys speak to whether or not you guys do part of that analysis, whether it fits into the model or not?
Yeah, the cost associated with the emissions with regards to the health impacts was not part of the cost that we're determining whether it would be lower cost to continue to operate the plant or retire the plant.
Okay, and so
Hard to quantify these costs. I mean, you could estimate that
Sure.
and feed those costs into the model to determine if considering those costs associated with the emissions might drive a different decisions, but that was not done in this case.
Okay, and you guys have obviously had an opportunity to review the RMI data that they presented. Do you guys have any reason to believe that the RMI data is faulty? Or that they pulled the data together on that specific component that it's error, you know, it's not accurate in any way?
I haven't dug into the details of that analysis. I mean, at a high level, I know there's a lot of assumptions that would go into that type of analysis, but I haven't dug into the details of how they came up with those health costs associated with the emissions.
Okay, and I think if I'm, if I'm reading the mind of some folks who've been very interested in our IRP and sort of the process that this has gone through, I think that they would tell us that they would love to have that conversation with you guys maybe on the front end, right? To go through some of this and to ensure if everyone could agree that they thought that this was an important thing to include in the plan itself, at least a component of the plan. And so I guess, you know, the board has, you know, previously discussed the potential for you know, revisiting this plan shorter than a five year time period. And so knowing that, you know, we've got the model now and, you know, this is a, this is going to be a maybe a less time intensive process going forward, just because we've got the model there, we can maybe put some inputs. Is this something that could be integrated into the model along the way? Or is this like, it would be difficult to, I guess, include this?
No, it would not be difficult to include those costs in the model. In my mind, the difficult thing would be to determine what those costs are.
Sure.
But as far as integration into an additional scenario, no, that would be relatively easy change to make.
Okay, and I appreciate that because I think that that certainly has piqued the interest of probably more than just the two board members who spoke to it. Right? And, and I guess, given, given our unique situation here in KCK. And so I think that, you know, to the extent, well, we've got a resolution on the IRP tonight, but I think, I guess what I would encourage going forward is that, you know, I know this is part of RMI's presentation. This is something some of us have pushed for before now. And that is, you know, let's get the stakeholders at the table much earlier in the process. And so, you know, if there's data that, that, you know, you guys, not that you're questioning RMI's data, because I don't think that you are, you just haven't had an opportunity to dig into it. You know, that you guys can collaborate on something like that, right? You guys come to the right, you know, that we think this is, you know, an accurate way to, you know, to portray this data, this is, this is based in, you know, good numbers, we've got that. So we all feel comfortable about putting this into the model for that. So that's, I guess, that's what I'd ask on a going forward basis. But I appreciate you guys on, I put you on the spot, I apologize, but I thank you for, for helping us understand where you guys, you know, were helping so much on the model. And RMI has presented these things to us now and something for the board to consider going forward.
One additional comment with regards to the analysis that was presented, if I may. Regards to the Ameron power plant, I believe that plant is over 1,000 megawatts, 1,200 megawatts, whereas the near man plants 235. So there's probably
I wonder if that was an apple to an orange.
Yeah, I mean, the savings may be less because of the smaller size of the near man
Sure.
than it was in that analysis. And I don't know if they've adjusted for the fact that the near man plant is maybe a fifth or a sixth of the size of that plant.
I believe that the RMI report will be, you know, added to as an exhibit or whatever to the IRP. So that when we go forward next, it'll be there, you know, that we can consider.
That's great, Mr. President. I appreciate that. I know that, again, this is something that, thank you Sierra Club and RMI for putting this together at no cost to BPU because it's given us obviously some additional information in addition to the IRP that's been presented to us. And I think it's important to factor, you know, their data and recommendations in going forward. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, since since this part of the public session was exclusively reserved for RMI, we're going to go ahead and close things out.
Okay.
And then move into general manager staff report. So first up is our third quarter financials. I'm sorry. That's later on in the agenda.
And then I might just, I think, or is there a leave the stand, the virtual stand, so to speak, that might make sense as well?
I'm sorry.
Thank you, Tyler.
Thanks very much. Yep.
Go ahead, Lauren.
Okay. Good evening. Tonight, present the 2024 third quarter financial results. To start out with, just take a look at our electric usage through the third quarter. So in comparison to 2023, we're down about 2.5%. Seeing our residential down about 6%, commercial down three. And then our industrial is up over 23 for about 5%. On the water side, overall, we're down about 1.9% compared to 23. So residential, we're seeing down about 2%. Commercial is less than a half percent up. And then our industrial is about 4% down. So looking at our income statement side on the revenues, just for the third quarter. Overall, in comparison to 2023, we're up about 3.7%. Our electric was up about 3.4 million as well as water, about 800,000. So in comparison to our 2024 budget, we are also up, it's up about 11.2%. We're seeing on the electric side up around 11 million as well as we're seeing an increase over budget by about 900,000 on the water side. Looking at our revenues year to date in comparison to last year at this time, so we're just up slightly, less than, a little bit less than 1%. Overall is about 2.6 million above. From a budget perspective, we're up about 4.6%. So about 12.2 million on the electric side, about 1 million on the water side. We are seeing, you know, a good increase in our commercial revenue growth. Our industrial is still kind of lagging behind in comparison to prior years. At the end of June, we did complete recovering our 2023 ERC of about 4.1 million. On the electric side, so we're up about 5%. Residential has increased about 3.1 million while commercials about 8.2. And as I stated, with industrial is down about 2.3. And we are seeing our wholesale sales down about 2.7 million. On the water side, we're up about 2% with residential up slightly, about 75,000. Commercial is up about 1.2 million and industrial pretty much in line with our budget, slightly below. And wholesale is down a little bit, about 800, or 84,000. On the operating expense for the third quarter, we're about seven and a half percent below 2023 levels. Down in comparison to, on the electric side, about 6.1 million, while water is up compared to 23, about a million. Compared to budget, so we're down about 9.2%. Electric is down about 5.9 million and water is down about 600,000. So we're seeing overall our fuel costs being down. And on the electric side is an overall down about 10% and the water side being down about 5%. Our operating expenses year to date, down in comparison to 2023 by about 7.4%. Overall, about 16 million down from last year. From a budget perspective, we're down about 4.3%. With, we're down about 5.6 million compared to budget on the electric side and about three and a half million on the water side. So electric overall is down about 3%, waters down about 11%. So this slide just takes depreciation out of the numbers there to true comparison on operating expenses. So compared to 23, we're down about 9%. And then from a budget perspective, we're down about 5.7%. Just looking at our budget to actuals, we're seeing purchase power up about 7.6%, 7.6 million. Our fuel costs are down about 6.3 million. Our production is down about 1.2. Our TND is down about 3.2 million. And then our general administrative is down about 3.1 million. On the water side, we're seeing below budget about 708,000 on the production side. 1.9 million on the TND side, about 850,000 on the general administrative side. So our change in net position for the third quarter, we budgeted about 21 and a half million positive change in net assets and net position. For the quarter, we are about 39.8 million to date with electric about 34.7 million of that and water is about 5 million. And our change in that position from a year to date, we budgeted about 32.9 million overall. We have an actual about 57.6 million with 45.4 of that on the electric side and 12.2 on positive on the water side. This just looks at our financial trend, looking at 2024, blue bar represents about 252.9 million. And the red bars are expenses at 207.4. So that nets out to about 45.5 million positive. On the water side, we see on the revenue side, the blue bar about 43.9, our expenses about 33.8, so positive about 5.9 million. When we look at our average daily collections for the month of September, we had a positive, or we're about 2.2 million overall on a daily basis. We're kind of coming out of our summer period. What this represents is September cash represents August build and July usage. So we have a few more months of summer usage. So we'll probably see this through, for the most part, through November. We'll start seeing a little decline there in the November time period. And as all you have recall, we, October was warm, November was fairly warm, kind of up and down. But we're still seeing some warm weather as we really come out of our summer period. Next slide looks at our monthly cash comparison. So for the month of September, we had a positive 11.8 in our monthly cash. So overall, September year to date, we're at a positive. year-to-date, we're at a positive 15.8 million. So the third quarter ERC had the recognition of the four and a half million of under recovery, over recovery, no, I'm sorry, under recovery of the ERC that we had in that first quarter. So that moved to the third quarter. So we're still going through finalizing our third quarter ERC calculations, but it appears that we've been able to recoup that full four and a half million in the third quarter, which is good news. So we don't have to carry that on forward. We've also made some capacity for our unused capacity. We have a contract with a company that they've are paying us for that unused capacity through the summer period. So that is netting us about 630,000 for the, for the summer period of June through September. Next slide is our cash position. So September 2024, we are at about 73.9 in cash, which is 124 days. We were at, in August, about 103 days. So good, positive cash flow going into September. Looking at our fuel inventory, our fuel is about valued about 8.8 million. September of last year, we're about 5.9. We have approximately, in our latest report, about 97 days of coal in our inventory. And I think we're getting close to our nominated amount for the year to be able to finish that out and meet our obligations there. On our historical days cash, so as I stated before, so we're at 124 days. This graph, we added a line to kind of give you a three-year average of where we were over time. I mean, we kind of have our ups and downs throughout the time period. So our three-year average, looking back into September '21 to current, we're about 78, 79 days on average. If you do, just look back at the last basically 12 months or whatever, that average is about 90 days. So we'll continue to track that. You know, as we talked earlier, as Tom mentioned, you know, we've had some good, good cash flows coming in in the last several months or whatever. Now it's up to us to sustain it and maintain it. And that's kind of our, our goal as we go forward. So. On the capital spending side, we've spent to date about 29 million of our 67 million budget overall. Electric spent about 16 million, while water spent almost 10 million. And then common, which is typically our IT and some of our facilities, is about 3 million. So we have about 56% of our budget remaining. Some of the major projects that are ongoing is our annual overhead and underground construction of additional community projects that they're working on, which has been about 1.9 million. Our meter program, which is about 841,000, so that's replacing our meters as they come to end of life. Continued work on our distribution pole inspection program, we spent about 1.8 million to date. For, you know, always trying to get our transformers, since it's such a long lead time. So our overhead and underground transformers, we spent about 1.7 million. We have our 98 street overhead feeder relocation, we spent about 725,000. And on the water side, there's a variety of projects within water distribution, main replacements, meter replacement. So we spent about 4.6 million. And then water production, like our Nierman Water Treatment Plant, it's about 600,000. And then our water services is about 500,000.
Lori, can I stop you right there?
Sure.
Can you go back for one slide, Rob, please? So that 56% of the capital spending that's remaining for the year, as of December 31st, 2024, what do you expect that number to be?
I do expect it to be a little higher than in years past because some of the things we had in the budget, we had, you know, projected to do a bond issue this year. And there was about almost $8 million to be spent to that bond issue in this year. Since we aren't doing the bonds, that'll be remaining. We had an EDA grant, you know, on the distribution side, we anticipated spending pretty much all of that, I think about 1.9 million in this year. That, we had to do some additional work, you know, in order to meet our EDA requirements and everything. So the work hasn't been done as expected in this year, and that's going to roll into next year. So that's another couple million. And then on the water side, they received, I think, a total of 10 million from EPA, I was going to remember, NPA or FEMA. EPA, they were anticipating spending about half of that in 2024. And I think getting their contracts done and the work set up and everything, they aren't going to spend that. So we have about, let's see, five, six, seven, about 14 million or so that we're not spending this year. So I would anticipate, you know, it would be, I don't know, 25% left or so.
And, and so when we look at that and think it's left, right, this is just going to roll into capital projects into 2025 and potentially beyond, but really 2025.
Right.
Right? So that money is just not sitting there available for any use we might consider.
And it's not available for operating or anything like that. So any excess that we have.
Doesn't go to any salaries.
Nope. We roll straight into our capital program in the next year. And then whatever's left after that year, we just keep rolling it in. So.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt. Thank you very much.
The last slide looks at our debt coverage. So at the September 2024, on our electric side, we're at, we're at 2.93x. Water is 2.93x as well. So it's a combined of 3.05x. And that's with pilot. So we're looking at our debt coverage without pilot. We're at 2.21x. Water is 2.32, and it's 2.32 as well on a combined basis. So. Our financial targets, I just kind of noted those there. So with pilot, you know, our guidelines are shooting for about 2.0x. So we're, we're doing good in that respect. And then even from without pilot, we're at 1.6x. So. Have any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Or an approval, if I could.
Do we approve these?
Yes.
I move to approve the third quarter financials.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Roll call, Grueneman.
Aye.
Haley. Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori.
Thank you, Lori. Next, I'll ask Janetta to come up. I think, you know, first want to thank the board for all of your tedious work on the committee and then the full board in reviewing the, the policy and, and making some, some good changes where, where needed and, and being patient with working with staff throughout this whole time period to kind of get our policies back to, get, get our policy to a place to where both the board and staff is on the same page with where we think we should be. So appreciate all the effort. Janetta, I will turn it over to you to ask for a resolution.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Good evening, Board. Before you have resolution number 5304 regarding the updated customer service policies and the customer service adopted fee and, and deposit schedule, we're asking for this to be approved and adopted to go into effect on November 11th, 2024.
Mr. President, I would make a motion to approve that with the following revisions to the, specifically to the fee schedule that I believe the board has available to them this evening. There are a couple of typos that need to be, and I have, I have provided those to Ms. Lawson in, notably in 2B, the third bullet point, and then also in 2C, the third bullet point, where it says electric only on both of those. I believe it should read electric and water because it's a combined deposit. And then there are also some formatting changes that need to be made. So when these go live out on the website, that they, the, the amounts aren't matching up with, with the actual description. So with those, with those revisions, I would move to approve the customer service policy.
Second.
It's been moved in second. And roll call, please.
I, I just, I read the revisions aloud as I reviewed it this evening as it was in front of me in, in a clean copy.
Have we been afforded?
Should be in your packet.
Yeah. It's not in my packet. Okay. All right. I mean, I don't have.
No, it was in a folder, a manila folder that was on your, at your desk this evening.
Folder, as always, but. All right, for the back at the end. All right. Thank you.
Sure.
Separate one.
Did you have any questions about it, Mr. Haley?
I haven't actually seen it, but I trust implicitly that the improvement and your ability to review and to fly spec would be, would meet my approval. And this motion is to add and then to add and to pass or to amend and to pass or just to add at this point?
It, it's, it's to approve with these revisions.
Further discussion, Mr. President. Thank you. I want to thank those who did work on these, these customer service and policy changes, the committees that did this. This has been certainly something that when I came on the board, I was hoping to see and that I requested. Another life, I was concerned that some of our policies are not as friendly, especially customer service, as those that are monitored by the KCC for the for-profit entities. And I think this is a step in the right direction. I guess my one question or concern is that how fluid this is. I would not want to see this motion, which I certainly support, pass. And we consider our work done in terms of what's an ongoing process. More work needs to be done regarding our policies and customer service. So I guess my concern is, once this is passed, are we saying, okay, we've done our work here. It's November of 2024. We need not address other issues that arise. So I'd like to put hopefully on notice an ongoing concern that there are issues that do arise that are not covered by this existing policy that we're adopting. Finally, let me say, one came up this week. I've been attempting to, certainly Mr. Johnson and customer service are aware it's not covered here. And, and 30 seconds or less, what that problem is, I was going to speak about it in, in board comments, but it's not here covered. Longtime customer who's been in a long-term care home and did not pay for three months of the three years that that customer has been in long-term care, did, was disconnected for not having paid for three months, wants to now return to the customer's home where they are in fact the homeowner, coming out of three years of rehabilitative care and was told that the back amount needed to be paid, which was 500 or so odd dollars, and scraped that up so that they could have their home worked on. It was paid and so that the work persons could get in to fix the home. And then the customer, still in long-term care, is informed that it's necessary to have current state ID. This is the resident of the home, longtime customer, interrupted for three months or so, and does not have state ID, having been in long-term care. That to me is, is ridiculous because as we sit here tonight, it's not been cut back on. And the service should be cut back on. I think the benefit of the doubt afforded so that somebody could return to their home. That's not reflected in this updated customer service that we would use common sense or the customer service or staff or general manager and others who are aware of this would use common sense. By the time it gets to the board and we're there to implement it, the damage is continuing to be done. I'm hoping that we will at some point in time find our staff that will implement common sense for certain policies, whether they're in black and white, ongoing policy decisions or not. That having been said, I support this, but hope that we continue to be fluid and well-meaning in ensuring that we implement policies that are more friendly to our, our customer base.
Thank you, Senator Haley. And just in response to that, Mr. President, if I may, and we've talked about this a little bit before, this, this is, this review was extremely comprehensive. The policy committee members, Mr. President, Mr. Parker, myself, sat with the staff of BPU in multiple sessions for a year. And the staff was tired of hearing me say, can we go back to line X on certain page, right? And I can assure you, when we've had this discussion, we cannot cover every scenario that our customers encounter, unfortunately, you know, in broad policies, you know, in this policy manual. And we certainly talked ad nauseam about multiple scenarios that each board member came up with, where they may have encountered a customer with something we couldn't find in the policy manual either. And, and to their credit, customer service would come back and say, well, you know what, we had one scenario in this one time where XYZ happened, and here's what we did in response to it. And having actually been inside the KCC many, many, many moons ago, I sat on their side of, of the table and watched how they do things. The, as, as good as an agency as they are, and I would not disparage my former state agency, but they cannot get into and provide the level of service. And I know people question that about BPU. And I know we can always improve it. But one thing that I think the three board members who sat here for a year with the staff and talked through all of these issues and this policy document discovered is that whether, whether anyone on the outside wants to know it or not, you know, and I'll shout it from the rooftops all day long, BPU goes a lot further in trying to meet our customers where they are than the KCC would ever allow. And again, no disparagement to the, the state, no disparagement to the IOUs who are, are under their governance. But because we are locally, you know, governed, we, we have this board that sits here, we have the ability to get in here and address things that are unique to this community that if we were under the KCC policies, that would not occur. And that just became crystal clear, certainly to me, I don't want to speak on behalf of the other policy members, but this, you know, we've, we've sort of joked about it a little bit, but this was a labor of love. When I came to this board in 2020, this board was reviewing the policies at that time. And I was new to the board then. I didn't want to upset the apple cart. I'm like, oh, they must have done a really comprehensive view, and they may have. But I can assure you, this one was a page turner. Every single page in this policy was reviewed, we discussed it, we discussed why this policy is in place, how we could perhaps tweak it and make it more responsive to our customers' needs. And I don't believe that this document should ever just be stable from now on. It's the best document that ever exists because it isn't. It's never going to be. I believe it should be fluid. I'm not sure what that cadence should be to actually do a comprehensive review like this. But given that it took us a year, probably not on a annual basis. this, but given that it took us a year, probably not on a annual basis because I don't think we're going to get there. But I think I think we can always improve these documents. But I just wanted to, in response to your, you know, the customer that reached out to you situation, I absolutely believe is probably not covered in this document at all, but we can't, we just, you know, we can't take a broad policy manual and and pull out every single customer scenario that we incur. And and obviously, I I have a great deal of empathy for that customer.
I.
Please allow me.
I'd kind of like to reiterate that point. I dealt with the issue today with a customer, and I left a message for you, Janetta, and I dealt with Gabby, and I dealt with Chris, and it's it's not specifically listed in this policy, but this person needed the help that this board, all of us, are willing to give. It's not spelled out anywhere, but customer service knew how to deal with her issue and take care of it. So I just reiterate Rose's piece. We can't put every single thing into policy in written review, but I'm sure if you stick with that customer, and you will help them get resolution.
Allow me to agree with what you're saying and to reiterate how much I genuinely appreciate the hard work that has gone into what is, and I hope will be, a fluid and not a end-all process with this particular document. If if it were possible that as members of the board, as we are, were reached out to by the public, who may bring an issue that's covered in our policy, which makes it easier for those who implement it, they don't have to think outside of the box, which they don't seem often prepared to do, that we who have to respond from the board have the ability then to bring some change. If this process were mine, in the customer that I'm still hoping will find a connection so that they might be able to move back into their home after the service people come, if this were mine, if we were contacted on the board, I would like to see in place for our policies that we could help abate that problem, that a board member could call up and say, since staff is unable to mitigate because they're bound by the black letter law in the in our our policies, that a board member says, cut them on. I would love to say, cut them on, we'll deal with the situation, we will handle that among ourselves or the board, that the board would have some ability to amend that which you have so diligently reviewed and put it together. We don't have that power. And it gets into a time consumptive and for me frustrating process to try and mitigate a problem for a longstanding ratepayer. And because of that, you know, and to go back to the drawing board, so today is Wednesday, tomorrow's Thursday, this has been going on for a week and a half, and we've got a customer who was not informed after scraping up $500, which they did not have because they're on fixed income and in long-term care, and then paying it without having to have state-issued ID, thinking that it would restore the service to the home that they want to move back into after paying the 500, given some subsequent requirement of coming up with state ID, which again, our policies might say make perfectly good sense, and we have to keep that in place for whatever reason. But at that particular time, leave someone in the dark or unable to get their home back in order. And it's a it's a frustrating situation that we can't, as board members who are contacted, as each of us are, I imagine, by constituents, we're not able to employ common sense because our staff is constrained by that which we are passing now today, though amended and prayerfully better, still not adequate.
Personally, I don't think a board member should ever go to a staff member and say, you need to you need to do this and circumvent the the policy. As a board member, I don't think we should we should do that, we should ever do that. We have a general manager. We need to go to the general manager or whoever he designates and say, you know, here's the situation, this is, you know, we'd like for you to look into it and take care of it. We don't need to go to that that employee. That's not our that's not our position.
And I appreciate I appreciate that opinion, Mr. President. I appreciate your opinion. It's not one that you and I both hold because I'm contacted quite a bit and common sense should be employed, and we need to cut through the red tape, I feel, from time to time, and then take it up at the next board meeting that we, a board member, got someone, I mean, we would, I mean, I wouldn't say that that board that that board action would not be subsequent to that, but I think to err on the side of our being more customer-friendly, a municipally-owned utility should have individuals who can mitigate an obvious situation with later approval, hopefully by the other board, the rest of the board. I I know we don't agree on that point, but I would hope that at some point, and we would have more power to as individual members who people are looking to for resolution, we're being stonewalled by incomplete policy guidelines that the staff follows to try and assist them because what else are we here for?
I I'll just say that every time that I've been approached by a customer, and it's numerous times, I've taken it to the general manager or whoever and say, you know, could you look into this, could you take care of it or assign it to the to the right person? And every time it's happened and it's been taken care of, I, you know, I I think, you know, again, common sense, you mentioned that, it's it is common sense, but I haven't seen the problems that you see.
Nobody knows the trouble I see. Okay, all right. But Jesus, all right. Well, thank you.
Just mention, I certainly empathize with anyone who cannot get their service on. I've been there. And I and I always remind myself and the board that that I've been in places where many customers have been, not being able to get your service on there and and looking at the policy. I think the rationale does not preclude people from getting their services on. I think there are policies in place that must be upheld. And I think those policies must be held just as much as policies are held for a person who wants to vote. I want to vote, and in order for me to vote, there are certain policies in place when I go to the to the to the place to vote, and that they will require me to have certified ID that I can utilize. If I don't have that, they will allow me to to do provisional, but they will not allow me, they will not allow my vote to count until that's been verified. So I don't know what type of 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 concession we're trying to make for any customer with outside of the policy. And because the the policy, I think, is very important, and I think that's why we have it. In other word, what was stated earlier, you're talking about board members having, that would create, I think, a myriad of problems because, number one, it would provide a subjective view of the situation and not objective, and that would expose us to lawsuits, you know, and and much more, many more complaints than probably we're receiving right now. So I I think that we have the the responsibility of doing our best to help that customer get to the place where they can fit within the policy. And when they can, when they have to go outside the policy, I think that's a discussion that we need to have with management or with 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 customer service. But I don't think that we should try to solve a problem that they've been dealing with for the last, how many years, 40 years? And I think that there's something that we should really be careful about when we talk about doing something outside of the policy that's set. That's that's.
Well, certainly appreciate that observation. We certainly would want to work within the confines of what's pre-existing. And like with voting, voting provisionally at least does allow someone to vote with, based on pre-existing. There are no options. If there were a provisional option that were employed for someone who's in need of service, we had the cold weather rule, for example, is provisional on the weather, the temperature. But if there's a provisional opportunity for someone to be or to mitigate the fact that they don't have current state ID, or a provisional opportunity for someone, I don't know, pick another choice, don't have the particular deposit, which we have put in place, it's provisional that they pay half down or what have you, just so that they can be restored within a period of time or have it connected within a period of time. I certainly appreciate that, not the hard, fast, you cannot be connected when you're in dire need of having your services on. That would be the error, the way, again, I would err, but then I'm customer-driven. I am, I mean, admittedly, I'm primarily driven more by our constituents than perhaps these pre-existing and soon-to-be-adopted new policies.
Mr. President, I I have a motion on the floor.
Yes.
I'm just looking for a second.
Just a second.
Maybe his question.
Yeah, this was just discussion on the motion. You can call the question if you'd like.
It's it's been called. Roll call.
Roll call, Greniman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Parker.
Aye.
Gonzalez.
Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll, I will have some comments when we get to the miscellaneous. I didn't have any, but now I do.
We have another policy. We have another policy.
Yes, yes. I'll worry up. You know, I I want to start by commending RMI for their presentation and apologize for the the glitch, which was outside of our control of the last board meeting, but for them being able to come back and and present their their PowerPoint to us. So I think there is things that we should acknowledge within that, but also remember having a conversation with the board about whether you approve or acknowledge the the integrated resource plan that we felt, just like the board, that there should be ongoing conversations with our stakeholders, and I certainly expect that to take place. So regardless of your of your action today, if you move forward with approving, then we can certainly still still do that because, you know, one thing that I I tried to talk about is, this is just a a place in time where we're trying to look forward and trying to list any number of options that we can we can include in the IRP, not knowing where we would be five years, not know where we're going to be 10 years, not know where we're going to be in 30 years. Okay? But there are changes on the horizon, there are changes that we're going to have to go through, and there's things that BPU is going to have to adjust its operations and finances around if we're going to stay in the generation business or get out. Okay? There's mandates that are that are that are impressed upon us today. There's going to be other rules and regulation that's going to come down the road to impact any decision that we think we may want to make. Some of those decisions may change based on all the unknowns that are still out there. But at least this is comprehensive plan, just like the customer service policy review. We spent a year and a half, almost two years, on doing generational assessment, doing IRP development, and here we are today saying, you know, here's a plan that we we've come up with to move forward with, knowing that if anything comes out of this, the board or stakeholders are all going to be involved because it's going to require any type of it's going to require resources in order to make any changes, you know, in one direction or the other, and that's going to require require board approval there. So so I'll ask Lori to read the resolution.
And then in the latest document, the IRP document that was loaded prior to the meeting, it did have RMI's original presentation as well as their document. We'll add this presentation too before we close out, so.
And this is the resolution is updated from what is in your agenda packets. It's got a couple changes that Rose brought.
Do I need to read anything or you think?
I can identify the what the pages were.
Okay.
So in paragraph one of the body of the actual resolution, I asked that the word approved be changed to authorized on the first line. So it's determined complete and is authorized for submittal. And in the second paragraph, I suggested that we delete Mr. Johnson's name, given his impending retirement and the fact that generically there will be a general manager in in that position, instead of actually naming the instant general manager.
I agree. Those are good calls.
Okay, so before you is resolution number 5305, authorizing the submittal.
Oh, sorry, Lori, one more.
Oh, okay.
Forgot. There's one added, paragraph three to this, and just capturing that the board has expressed its intent that this IRP be reviewed earlier than the five-year requirement.
So I would ask for your approval of resolution 5305, authorizing the submittal of the IRP to Western Area, Western Area Power Resources.
I move to approve a resolution 5305.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second. Roll call, please.
Roll call. Breniman.
Aye.
Haley.
Aye.
Wakes.
Aye.
Mulvaney Henry.
Aye.
Aye.
Gonzalez. Aye.
That motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. I'd like to thank the board for approving this. Also like to thank our partner in Black and Beach for all the work that you've done to help us get to this date. So moving to miscellaneous comments, just a just a reminder, again, I know we talked about it in the work session, board retreat is on the 18th, it's a Monday. Lori, what time? And then I've got a follow-up question too.
I just sent out a meeting notice today, so kind of set aside 8:00 AM to 4:30 PM. 8:00 AM, we'll have a breakfast before we get started at 8:30. And then we'll either break for lunch or grab lunch while we're going through it or whatever. So.
And the documents, when will the board receive that?
They're going to print tomorrow, so if we get them printed early enough, we'll get them delivered to you. So it'll be, you know, eight or nine books like we have before for each of the divisions and the overview. So we should have those to you either tomorrow or no later than Friday.
Good, thank you. And then finally, on the.
Is that, just excuse me then, is that for adoption on the final meeting of December as?
So we we set it up for approval on December 4th. That allows us, if there is additional time needed, that we can, we have one more meeting that we can continue it until that second meeting in December.
Okay.
Okay.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. And then finally, regarding regarding customer information, things the board may hear, things this staff may hear, but I want to pivot back to some of the things that the board may bring to us, and I'll even say some of the things that customers may bring to us directly during the board meetings, okay? So there are, there's things that customer service knows about our customers that are that are well documented within our customer service system that I may not even always know. So I'm sometimes, you know, called it a loss as well, but rest assured that that there are occasions that customers are reporting something that's quite accurate, okay? And and I think even without me having to get involved, the customer service, people will acknowledge that and and address it to the satisfaction of our customers. And if the board does hear about it, like Tom just said, you know, to the satisfaction of the board member that may bring it to us. But there are occasions where you may hear things, but you may not have all the facts, and that's just simply part of life, okay? And but and we may not have all the facts, but sometimes we may have a lot more information than what that board member has heard from the customer. Okay? And that issue has to be resolved in the best way possible. And I would assure the board that staff works on a number of options and providing a number of options back to the customer on how to help. staff works on a number of options and providing a number of options back to the customer on how to help them through any issue. Okay. And just sometimes, sometimes there is no, no answer to getting them to where they want to get to, especially if we are providing a number of options and they won't agree to any of them. Okay. And then that becomes a point to where, okay, there is an impasse that we can't cross and the customer is not going to be happy and the board may still hear from that, but rest assured, these policies are important to me. These important policies are important to the board, I mean, to our staff. And the policies that the board adopts are policies that we follow. That makes us a stronger organization. That makes us stay within the guidelines of what we should be doing. And that also helps us with not treating one customer different than the other. Okay. It provides some consistency across all of our customer accounts because if we deviate from that, customers wouldn't know because they talk to each other. Well, I got this done or I got this done. And it becomes a bigger problem for the board, for BPU and for the community. So these are guidelines that I am certainly proud that this board has been involved with to the level of with the amount of work that you put into these policies. And, and I'm happy with the outcome. I think staff is extremely happy to be where we are moving forward. And anything we do, we do, we do is going to be strictly in line with what the policies speak to. And if there are gray areas, then we will try to work through those. If there are policy changes that need to be made, we'll certainly bring that back to the board. And sometimes the board may hear things and bring it back to us. So we may be addressing policy issues before, you know, after that. So, you know, I would say, what, three, four of the past five years, we've been dealing with the policy on some degree. Most of it has been around cold weather, hot weather rules and stuff like that. But this board is not ever. We have never had a policy that just sat dormant for any length of time, as long as I've been general manager. Okay. We've always reviewed it. Okay. And I would expect that that would be going on well after I retire. So we do the best, Rose. I certainly appreciate your comments earlier. You know, if we were, if we were under the KCC, and I've said this too, we go far beyond what investor owns and what regulated utilities are in terms of helping our community. Okay. And I don't think that, I don't think that we get that message out as much. So that's on us. Okay. But I don't think that we get enough credit for trying to do all that we do too, for those that understand that message. Okay. Because, I mean, criticizing the staff, criticizing BPU is the easiest thing in the world to do. Okay. But also sometimes accept the fact that we live in this community. We understand the issues of this community. We understand our customers and we try to do the best we can to assist them where we can within the policy framework that we work with. So just wanted to leave that behind and also thank the board again, for all your hard work. Mr. President, I'll turn it back over to you.
Okay, public comments on the agenda items.
That's right. Sorry.
Please give your name and address and have three minutes.
Thank you very much. Ty Gorman, 2843 Parkwood Boulevard, 66104. A lot of the time I come up here with community members to, to, you know, but I live my neighbors and volunteer and fight for lower prices for folks and stop and shut offs. This time I'll just show up as the Sierra Club representative for the central region of of the country, working all over, maybe on coal campaign. And I say that because I want to make it really clear that the Sierra Club partnered with the Rocky Mountain Institute in one sense only, and that was to wrangle some things to get them here. We didn't do any of the analysis. We didn't tell them what to look at. We didn't tell them the goals to look at. We just said, come here, look at this IRP they made, give recommendations. We, I didn't edit it. I didn't see it before you saw it. Or at least I didn't, they might, they might have sent it to him, but I didn't see it before you. So yeah, I just wanted to say this is an independent analysis from one of the most respected organizations that work on this kind of thing nationally and internationally. Welcome you to look them up and check out what they've done and the projects they work on and use Tyler and the other emails that were up there as a resource in the near future for some of the information, including health statistics. Also feel free to look up toll from coal. Just Google toll from coal. And that has another kind of analysis with different assumptions on health and impacts from coal plants that you can read the assumptions there. All right. So thank you so much for being open-minded to this. I wanted to bring three things from the recommendations there. The first was as far as reaching out to the community, that doesn't have to be done in an integrated resource plan process and it really needs to be done, as General Manager was just saying, to bring the community in and get the changes and opportunities and good things out to the community to push back on the UG fees and all the other things people are talking about in the fixed fees. So, I mean, that process and bringing people in on the long-term plans and goals of the board is something that I think should be done real soon and when the new general manager and as a part of the plan. The second thing is the demand response section. If we're going to lower bills significantly for people in the short term, it's going to be efficiency and demand-side management coming into people's homes. And that really needs a lot of focus from the utility to manage funds coming from the outside. And right now there's not a lot. I mean, no, no fault necessarily, but there need to be more people involved. I only know one guy really in charge of all that. So last thing. The election and all the fallout from that. This is the first time ever that nonprofits have had access to this huge amount of tax credits and grants.
That's true.
Grants. Just a couple more sentences if I may. Tax credits as grants. Before this, municipalities were a big disadvantage for getting clean energy and investment help from the federal government because of the lack of tax. Very real. So really looking, they're not going to be able to cancel that out right after the inauguration and it's going to extend through the end of that year, I'd say. So I'd just encourage you.
That was time.
Pressure on looking at this really soon, like first quarter next year. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Next signed up to speak is Christina Nelson. You can state name and address for the record and you have three minutes.
Christina Nelson, 19 North 3rd Street, KCK. I want to thank you guys for the work on the customer service policy. But I think what everybody forgets is the customer service part of that policy. As somebody who's had to speak to this utility multiple times since July, I've gotten some of the most ridiculous answers I have ever seen, heard. I asked why we had a power usage when the lines burnt half on the ground. I thought, oh, it's still residual power. Okay, it's been 48 hours, but I'll go with it. I have asked, I asked for help trying to figure out my flex pay account and the response was, what do you want me to do about it? The basics of customer service are you listen to your customers and help them and help them understand. That's customer service that we are taught from the time you start working at 16 years old, if you work fast food. It's basic customer service skills that are lacking and sorely lacking. And for Mr. Greniman, I appreciate your response to my email. I will tell you, I have yet to get a response from anybody from the BPU from that email. The one I sent you three weeks ago. As you said, you forwarded over. I've gotten no response from anyone.
So which board member did you speak to?
Mr. Greniman.
Room. Okay.
And he said he forwarded it to you and I've heard nothing. No, you're okay. Hi.
I don't have the, I don't have it in front of me. I'm just trying to make sure I can track it down.
Okay.
Okay.
I thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak about the topics on the agenda tonight? Hearing none. I'll turn it back over to you. Oh, I'm sorry. Anybody online?
Hello?
Yes. Do you need to state your name and address for the record? You have three minutes.
Good afternoon. Good evening. My name is Dr. Hall. I live in Kansas City, Kansas. Real quick, I do want to say kudos because I know personally customer service has met several times with us, with the people that I advocate. I still believe that there's a lot of work to be done. I'm glad that you set up a policy that took a year, which is kind of concerning because we as a taxpayer and you are a public-owned utility, you should have the focus of the community needs first. I agree that the policy does take time, but this is a technology age and we need to improve to serve our community. Our community is the number two diverse community in the country. And now I'm just finding out that we're also a polluted community, which again, concerning. I believe that the policy should be fluid as the needs of the community continue to change and evolve. That way the, the policy doesn't need to go back and revise. The needs of the community will be changing as we continue to grow and improve and maybe, you know, the consolidation of soft consolidation, which I continue to push. Hopefully that will work to save money for our community. My next question is also, why could you not remove the pilot, but you could increase your days of cash on hand and an average of 90 days to 120, 24? That could also save money to our taxpayers and you can help us with those $14 million that UG and all that debacle that happened last week. My concern is that the statement is being said continuously that you're elected to serve the community, that you're conscious about the needs of the community, all those things, but I still, I still get calls to about the needs. The questions have not been met. I know that in several meetings, the, the, the statement has been made that the customer service needs to be open to make sure that we adjust to the needs of the community. I don't believe that that's happening. I think what BPU and the management is.
You have 30 seconds.
Community modifies and goes to your needs. And again, you are a public identity organization. I believe that the focus should be to service our community, make sure that we don't go, continue to go into the red and that you advocate because that's what you were elected. And as a leader, if you're running this, this organization, you need to make sure that the number one is public service and be conscientious that our community is.
That is your time.
Thank you.
Rob, is there anyone else wanting to speak? I'm sorry. Okay.
Louise Lynch, Kansas City, Kansas.
Okay, Louise, you got three minutes. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say that in regard to the meeting last week, there are a lot of things that were said on the UG side that were more than incorrect and has slipped in that into the community of what they truly believe and say. I think the community needs to do their due research and understand how the taxes and the pilot and all that truly come from. As the BPU does not pay property taxes because it is a not-for-profit. There are, this originated as a franchise fee. And I duly appreciate you not only trying to remove this off of our bill as a geographic, relocating a geographic location, but to take that expense off of our plate because the bills and the taxes and everything are too high. And now with the new national administration coming in, things are going to get worse. So I appreciate you bringing things back to make them transparent for us to understand on all levels, for all people to understand. But I believe as a customer, it is our duty to understand where all that is coming from and who is telling the mistruths and not to believe everything that we hear. Because the truth is always going to come out and very soon there is more truth coming out. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's see, there's a Tommy. Let's see, unmuted. So if you can state your name and address for the record, you have three minutes.
Yeah, you bet. Carrie McCarthy, Kansas City, Kansas. I thought this was on the agenda items, but now that we've brought up and you allowed the previous speaker to speak on the meeting last week, I would like to add my thoughts and that is absolutely, we want and expect transparency, yet we have had to have it since the, have yet to have it since the meeting last week. A question just came up, why were we averaging 90 days of cash over the last three years? And all of a sudden we're up to 124 days of cash. And by the logic of the unspent capital budget will be work and roll over to next year, then I would expect next year's budget to reduce by the amount that we are rolling over to the work next year. That the money goes with the work, right? So if the work isn't getting done, then by that logic, what you asked for for budget, what, two months ago? That would reduce by what you're carrying over with the reduction of not getting work done this year. Right? And I would like to take a look at the vacant positions and have an explanation on why the revenue is higher than the cost even for 2023 and 2022. What is driving the revenue to be greater than the cost on a nonprofit cost to service? Thank you very much. Appreciate those answers.
Rob, I'm not looking, I don't see any other hands raised. Am I correct? All right. So closing out this section, Mr. President, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Board comments. Rose, do you have any comments?
No, I want to thank again RMI for the presentation that they partially gave a couple of weeks ago and then, and then gave again tonight or gave part of tonight. That was important information to have. And again, I'd like to reiterate gratitude for BPU not having to pay for an outside, another outside consultant's eyes on, on this plan. So I believe that's all I have tonight. Mr. Breniman.
Mary?
I have no comments.
Brett?
Just echo a little bit of what Rose said. Appreciate the great discussion around the IRP, the input from Rocky Mountain. Big thanks to Black and Beach for all the work that you all did and entertaining. Certainly more than my fair share of questions on the topic. So I appreciate you indulging me on that. And then lastly, I just want to, and I probably commented on this a few times before, but thank Rose, Tom, all the staff, especially Jeanetta and her team on the giant lift that was updating those customer service policies. I think anyone curious about that process, those meetings were livestreamed. If you, if you want to spend a few hours of your time digging into that, it's a fascinating process. And as a new board member, I really appreciate getting to be a part of that, to hear great ideas from board members, from staff. Jeanette, I know your team brought really thoughtful ideas often about the work that you do to assist our customers and to help us think through all of the different scenarios that are out there so that we could make sure that, you know, the utility is running well, but also be as responsive as we can be. So that was, made me proud to be a part of this board and to get to work with such great staff on some of these things. So I appreciate all the work from everyone.
Mr. Wakes?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I want to say thank you also to RMI and to the Customer Service Committee and our customer service staff for doing such an excellent job in helping with the policy. When we talk about the weaknesses in our customer service policy, I think as Bill Johnson referred to earlier, something about tooting our horn. The great things that we do, the great work that we do is not heard and have because it concerns me that we have some of the same people making, making complaints because many, many times they're confused with what the relationship is between BPU and the UG. And I think many of that is because it's not being communicated well. And maybe we can do a better job in communicating that relationship so that people don't believe that we can change everything about the burden on the people's pocketbooks. Also, I think, well, I'd like to thank my fellow board members for doing an excellent job and being present and trying to address the relationship between the board and the UG on last Thursday. And certainly I think that we all benefited from being there and hearing the miscommunication that was being held so we can make, maybe. so we can make, maybe communicate that better to, to the public. Other than that, I think there's a lot, as my first year on the board, that I still need to learn. But I'm very grateful for what I've learned so far. And hopefully what I, what I've learned can be learned by many of the people that are part of this city. Thank you so much.
Senator Haley?
Thank you, Mr. President. And let me ditto some of what has been said regarding the evolution of this customer service policy and the evolution of customer service and the dedication that the staff and that the board members on this have given. I sincerely am appreciative that it is evolving, that we are moving toward the better. And they always say that the enemy of better is best. And I don't want that to be the case with my comments. I am appreciative that we are definitely meeting some more of the goals and concerns of our ratepayers, of our constituents, because it's no secret that's been one of the issues that's constantly raised in terms of the relationship between our utility and the general public. We've all heard that. I would hope that we could find some policy as was referred to. Sometimes the board members don't have all the facts in front of them when wanting to mitigate whatever the problem is. And I would hope that we could find something where a request of privacy release or data release, that if that customer were to say that in writing, that they would allow us to have, that that board member could have a fuller understanding of that information that staff is privy to, which keeps them from getting the proper response. That we could do that so that we could still be involved as we move toward the best after having now achieved the better. I would hope that would be something we consider so that we can help to assist our, our customers better. Want to thank again on the IRP, Mr. President, members, you know, Black and Beach, RMI. Glad we got there, you know, again, all the hard work to bring us to this fruition that we'd have the resolution passed. That's been a longstanding issue and concern and so glad to see us finally get that passed. Final is that we still have our dormant plants. That's still another issue or concern that I have. I don't know if there are any good plans out there being considered. Quandero and Call, they're sitting dormant and we have been talking about that, I certainly have for a couple of years. We talk about revenue that we're probably leaving on the table at this particular time. I want to continue to raise that issue that I would hope that those RFPs that we had out, that something would have been acted on after two years of asking and still maintaining these dormant plants, whether it's cutting the grass or keeping staff on. I certainly would hope that we would at some point in time finally do that after all this time to get those places leased or what have you. That's all that I have at this point, and thank you, Mr. President.
And I have no comments, so I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Wakes move? Determine?
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Roll call?
Roll call, Groneman?
Aye.
Haley?
Aye.
Wakes?
Aye.
Mulvaney, Henry?
Aye.
Parker?
Aye.
Gonzalez?
Aye.
That motion carries. This meeting is adjourned.